Mr. Friedman.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Libbit?
Here.
Mr. Havas. Madam Chair, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we will move into our public hearing. For those of you that haven't joined us before, let me briefly describe how we conduct business. The city will call the case by the case number. They'll read a brief summary of that case. Then we have to name an address for the record. Also, if you'll sign in on the sign-in sheet that's at the podium, too. And then explain to us what you're asking for and why. Then the city will read the findings of fact. We ask you to agree with those facts or add any other facts at that time. Then we will open public comment. So if you're here to speak on a case, that is your opportunity to speak on the case. We'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. I'm sorry, I did miss one thing. At some point in there, there is a staff recommendation as to whether the board approve or not approve the request. So will the city call the first case, please?
Yes, ma'am. The appellant Mikez and Mackey, please forgive me, Scherates, owner is requesting the following waiver from the board. The waiver of lot coverage for two additional, two additions totaling 966 square feet, 25% allowed, 34.17% proposed. A waiver of side yard setback, 20-foot minimum required, 19.7 proposed. A waiver of front yard setback, 40-foot minimum required, 34 feet proposed. A waiver of rear yard setback, 35 minimum required, 30.3 feet proposed. The property is located on the south side of George Washington Drive between Fairfax Street and Greenfield Road at 15587 George Washington Drive, Sidwell Parcel 2425-234006, Zoned R3, single-family residential. This appeal is to the section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Scherates and the address is 15587 George Washington Drive in Southfield.
Thank you. Okay, could you step to the microphone just so it can be picked up? We are being recorded.
I'm Alki Scherates, 15587 George Washington Drive.
Thank you. If you could explain to us what you're asking for and why, please.
So, we're asking for, I don't have the specifics that the gentleman read, but the specifics to make, to make an addition to the house in the, in the, in the back, to go back. My parents are also Southfield residents and they're both in their 90s and it's, it's, it's time for them to have some help. And, and they're not, they're, you know, thank God, we're in a position where we're able to take care of them, so we need to make some space for them. We have our own, thank God, large family, so we don't have any room to give up for them. So we like to, so we need to extend and build a, a small apartment that's going to make for them a, a room, a kitchenette, and, and a, a small living space.
Okay. Anything else? This won't be your only opportunity, so we'll come back to you. All right, will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, ma'am. The appellate, Mikez and Mackey Scherates owner is requesting the following waiver from the board. A waiver of lot coverage for two additions totaling 966 square feet, 25% allowed, 34.17 proposed. A waiver of side yard setback, 20 feet minimum required, 19.7 feet proposed. A waiver of front yard setback, 40 feet minimum required, 34 feet proposed. A waiver of rear yard setback, 35 feet minimum required, 30.3 feet proposed. The property is located on the south side of George Washington Drive between Fairfax Street and Greenfield Road at 15587 George Washington Drive, Sidwell Parcel 2425-234006, Zoned R3, single-family residential. This appeal is to the section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The properties to the north, southeast, and west are Zoned R3, single-family residential and developed with single-family dwellings in the Kentfield Manor Sub Number One. Field inspections of the surrounding area reveals the properties to the north, southeast, and west are mostly one-story, single-family dwellings. The exteriors are made of mostly of brick and siding. Most of the homes in the area do not have garages. The construction of surrounding properties ranges from 1,400 square feet to 2,500 square feet. Surrounding properties are mostly legal, non-conforming, with lot size setback and lot coverage requirements. The subject property was built in 1959 and is a 1,662-square-foot, one-story, single-family residence on a full basement and is a legal, non-conforming residence. Existing lot is 8,209 square feet, 9,000 square feet is required. Existing side yard setback is 19.7, 20 feet required. The appellant proposes to construct a one-story, 678-square-foot addition on the south side, which is the rear of the house of the residence, and a 288-square-foot addition to the front of the residence. The addition to the south side of the residence does not increase the legal, non-conforming side yard total setback of 19 feet, 7 inches. The appellant is requesting a waiver of lot coverage for two additions totaling 966 square feet, 25% allowed, 34.17% proposed. A waiver of side yard setback, 20 feet minimum required, 19.7 feet proposed. A waiver of front yard setback, 40 feet minimum required, 34 feet proposed. A waiver of rear yard setback, 35 minimum required, 30.3 feet proposed.
Great, thank you. Do you agree with those facts? Any other, it's a lot of facts, I know. Any other facts you want to add at this time?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
The other, we, we brought with us some papers from the neighbors that...
Sure, yep, you can bring those up. And then we'll read them into the record.
It's addresses and names of neighbors that show their full support in our extension.
Okay, thank you.
We have a very, we have an incredible relationship with our block and their full support in...
Okay, thank you.
There is no presentation on that end.
Okay. Um, let's wait until we ask. Okay, so will, can the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration of the following waivers. For 9.17% increase in lot coverage, 34.17% proposed, 25% allowed. A .3 feet reduction in side yard total setback, 19.7 feet total proposed, 20 feet total allowed. A six-foot setback reduction for front yard setback, 34 feet is proposed, 40 feet is required. And a 4.7 feet reduction in rear yard setback, 30.3 feet proposed, 35 feet required, with the following conditions. The appellant secure all required permits and clearances to construct a new addition to the residence in the city of Southfield. The new addition meets the requirements of the 2015 Michigan Residential Code. This recommendation is based on the following. Due to the existing legal, non-conforming residence on the parcel, the strict application of the ordinance would result in practical difficulties and hardship to the owner and would not impair the intent or purpose of the ordinance. And the requested waiver for setbacks in lot coverage are minor in nature, would not have an adverse effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add? Okay, if you just want to stay in the front row, we'll open up to the public. If there's anyone from the public here to speak on this case, this would be your opportunity to step forward. And if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Diana Pegler, 15640 George Washington. I am a resident going into 34 years on that particular block. I was never asked what I thought about this proposed improvement. I do not, I've seen in our subdivision where people are building vertically and it takes away from the character. And this would be the only home on this particular block that would be looking like that. I didn't move here to live around skyscrapers. And while there would be an increase in paying in terms of property taxes, that's not the point. It's about the character of the neighborhood that we're trying to maintain. It's the Southfield Homeowners Association. And if everyone else on the block was asked, why wasn't I asked? Why wasn't some kind of communication shared with me? I've done improvements over the 34 years that I've lived here, but I made sure that I was consistent with the character of the community. We all know that we can't live in our basements in Southfield. It's just impossible. And that takes away some of your space, and I understand that. I'm not opposed to improving. I've done several improvements on my home. But there's a problem for me in terms of building up and why, and it's the only house on the block that will be looking like that. It's hard enough in our subdivision for the homes to be maintained, the grounds to be maintained. It is a true struggle. So I don't see how this space, additional space, is going to add any type of character to our community. And more importantly, why wasn't I asked? I'm the longest resident on that particular block and nobody thought enough of me to ask me what I thought. As, you can make improvements, but keep them within the character of the community. That's all I'm asking. I'm all for home improvement.
Thank you. Um, yes, please, thank you.
And I am the president of Southfield Homeowners Association.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that we should, to speak on this case? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
Jody?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Excuse me for just a moment. Could you please read into the record all...
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, that's what we should do first, thank you.
Okay. This is a, a letter from neighbors. It's, it says, "Read 15587 George Washington, Southfield, Michigan, 48075." It's, "I have reviewed the proposed plans for the addition dated 10/31/22 for the Scherates residents, and I am in full support." And it is signed, "Shoshana Blumenfeld, 15710 Fairfax. Moshe Grossbard, 15588 Arbor Place. Valerie and Stuart Sandweiss, 15552 Arbor Place. Irvin and Esther Edelstein, next-door neighbor, 15575 George Washington, Southfield. David and Leah Bausk, 15539 George Washington. Yisrael M. and Rachel Levin, 1558 George Washington. Bachi Kohn, 15605 George Washington Drive, next-door neighbor. Moshe Goldberg, 15618 George Washington Drive. Chaya and David Mendelson, 15634 George Washington Drive. Gwendolyn Hark, I believe it says, 15651 George Washington Drive. And then this is illegible, but it's 15680 George Washington. And Rifki Gordon, 15671 George Washington. And Yisrael and, and Rachel Levine, 15635 George Washington. And then Simchian Khanalea Friedman, 15600 George Washington Drive."
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Uh, yeah, I don't have a problem with any of this. I know that there was an objection for going vertical, but this plan is actually going horizontal. There's not a second story on this addition. So the ranch-style home remains the same, even though the back of the yard is a little bit smaller. So I want to just respond to that. Other than that, I don't have a problem with these variances being requested.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libbit?
I don't have a problem with the variance either. It seems actually, since it's still going to be a ranch, it would be in keeping with the neighborhood and the extra support from neighbors. Other neighbors does mean something.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I, I don't have an issue with it either. And, and again, as Mr. Rogers said, this is, is not a vertical residence. And one of the things that was interesting to me to respond to, to, to the comment that we received, being on this board, is learning that very often the zoning requirements are what makes people go vertical. Because you don't need a waiver to, usually to put a second story on a ranch. You know, the, if you have, if you just go straight up, you're not, you wouldn't violate any zoning residence. And I believe if, if I can ask the city, that would be the case, even if you're like existing, non-conforming?
Correct.
Yeah, so, so I mean, that, sometimes the zoning requirements would require you to build up because of the zoning requirement. So again, I don't have an issue with it and the neighbors, many of the neighbors.
Madam Chair, if I may, address the board. One of the things about this is, is to, just to be clear, that there is no change in the roof line. The roof remains the same height. And the house is already a non-conforming house. It's short on side yard setback. It doesn't meet the 20-foot minimum, has been since it was built. The lot coverage, the lot is substandard to the ordinance. The ordinance requires a 9,000-square-foot lot. There's only an 8,200-square-foot lot there. And the additions that are being put on do not increase the setbacks on the sides. They just line up with the existing, non, legal, non-conforming setbacks. The, the issue would be the front of the house, where they're going to put an open porch, six-foot porch on the front to have an entryway that would keep people out of the weather.
And as I, and from the plans, it looks like that's the only further encroachment is that six-foot porch.
That's correct.
In the front of the house. So again, I have no issues with it.
Okay. I agree with my colleagues and need a motion. You want to make a motion, please?
I can. With regard to case number 22-36, the appellant Mikez and Mackey Scherates owners are requesting the following waiver from the board. Waiver of lot coverage for two additions totaling 966 square feet, 25% allowed, 34.17% proposed. A waiver of side yard setback, 20 feet minimum required, 19.7 proposed. A waiver of front yard setback, 40 feet minimum required, 34 feet proposed. And a waiver of rear yard setback, 35 minimum required, and 30.3 feet proposed. The property is located on the south side of George Washington Drive between Fairfax Street and Greenfield Road at 15587 George Washington, Sidwell Parcel 2425-234006. I move that we approve the waiver for a 9.7, 9.17 increase in lot coverage, .3 feet reduction in side yard total setback, and a six-foot setback reduction for the front yard setback, and a, front yard setback, and a 4.7-foot reduction in rear yard setback, with the following conditions. That the appellant secure all the requirement, required permits and clearances to construct the new addition. And the new addition meet the requirements of the 2015 Michigan Residential Code. And I make the motion because due to the existing legal, non-conforming residence on the parcel, strict application of ordinance would result in practical difficulties and hardship to the owner and would, and the waiver would not impair the intent and purpose of the ordinance. And the, that the setback in lot coverage waivers are minor in nature, it won't have an adverse effect on the adjacent and surrounding properties, and that many of the neighbors have expressed their approval of the waiver.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, your request, your variance request is granted. Continue to work with the city, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Will the city call the next case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Case number, ZBA case number 22-37. The appellant Adam Kowits and of Kokasing Industrial Incorporated, LSE, representing the owner GHG Investments LLC, owner is requesting the following from the board. Approval of a temporary use permit to allow for the outside storage of 30,000 cubic yards of soil for a period of a, one additional year to continue to be utilized for a phased construction project off-site. The property is located on the north side of Eight Mile Road between Sherman Avenue and Berg Road, Sidwell Parcel 2433-376-052, Zoned B3, general business. This request is in accordance with the section 5.198, Article 23, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. My name's Adam Kowitz. Do you want my home address or project address?
Um, a business address is fine.
Business address is 20920 East Street, Southfield, Michigan. And I'm here to get an extension on the property on Eight Mile for our temporary storage of soil. We've been here the last two years for occupying that site for storing, storage of soil. Project has experienced delays due to pretty much the COVID-related delays, supply issues, material delays, and asking for a year extension for the zoning of that property.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
For ZBA case 22-37, the appellant Adam Kowitz of Kokasing Industrial Incorporated, LSE, representing the owner GHG Investments LLC, owner is requesting the following from the board. For approval of a temporary use permit to allow for the outside storage of 30,000 cubic yards for soil, of soil, for a period of one additional year to continue to be utilized for a phased construction project off-site. This would be their third request. Property is located on the north side of Eight Mile Road between Sherman Avenue and Berg Road, Sidwell Parcel 2433-376-052, Zoned B3, general business, and P vehicular parking. The subject property is mostly undeveloped with a portion currently used for soil storage. The property to the north is Zoned R1, single-family residential, and is developed with a single-family home fronting Berg Road. Property to the south within the city of Detroit is Zoned Commercial and is developed with a parking lot. The properties to the east are Zoned I1 Industrial, P vehicular parking, and B3 general business, and are developed with Lumigen Incorporated and Central Carpet Warehouse. The properties to the west are Zoned RM, multiple-family low-rise, and B3 general business, and are developed with Applewood Apartments, a single-family home fronting Sherman Avenue, and American Pool Services. The total site contains 3.7 acres of land with 225 feet of frontage on Eight Mile Road and a depth of 816.03 feet. A 165-foot by 320-foot portion of the site is currently being used as a yard for the temporary storage of 30,000 cubic yards of soil for future infill in the Great Lakes Water Authority West Service Center Reservoir Pump House and Divisional Valve Replacements Project located on East Street. The piles of soil are currently 20 feet in height or less with a two-to-one slope. The tree shrub scrub along the property lines assist in mitigating wind erosion. However, the city of Southfield Engineering Department has been monitoring the site to determine if and when watering may be necessary to minimize wind erosion. The mounds have also been vegetated to further minimize wind erosion. Soil erosion permit, which was required from the engineering department, allows the site to be monitored by engineering staff throughout the duration of the storage. Six-foot tall fencing screens the stockpile on all four sides. The northeast and west sections of fencing are located along their respective property lines. And the south section of fencing is located approximately 300 feet from the south property line, line along Eight Mile Road. Opaque mesh fabric has been installed on the fencing at the city's request to serve as a visual barrier from adjacent properties. Additionally, there's a 30-foot setback on all sides between the proposed fencing and stockpile. ZBA case 2020 was approved on January 26, 2021, for one-year temporary use approval of the existing soil storage. ZBA case 21-30 was approved on January 18, 2022, for an additional one-year temporary use approval. Requests for temporary use extensions over and above the initial request plus one possible extension for two years total are typically not entertained or permitted as a general policy. However, due to trade labor shortages, building material shortages, and supply chain issues based on current economic conditions stemming from the COVID-19 pandemic, the project requires an additional one-year extension. The engineering department received complaints from Lumigen at 22900 West Eight Mile Road in March 2021 with concerns about the dirt pile potential to cause dust to enter their air handling systems. Kokasing installed plastic over the dirt pile, which seemed to mitigate their concerns. In August 2021, engineering received a complaint about silt-laden water runoff entering the parking lot at Central Carpet Wholesale at 23,000 West Eight Mile Road. The plastic was increasing the rate of runoff during our intense rain events, which caused runoff to top over the sediment-control silt sock. Kokasing responded by adding silt fence at the base of their dirt pile, as well as near the shared property line with the Central Carpet Wholesale. They also cleaned the carpet businesses, parking lot, and storm system. Some runoff still flows into the parking lot, as is the, as is the intended drainage pattern, but runoff is now free from heavy sediment. Although the planning department was unaware of the complaints made, city engineer Lee Schultz has indicated that the engineering department is satisfied with the responsiveness of Kokasing at this temporary soil storage site and is in support of extending the temporary use as part of the new water storage tank construction project at the Great Lakes Water Authority Storage Facility on East Street. Temporary use approval is required as part of a, a public infrastructure project. The filter will be used to backfill the property after the old tanks are removed.
Thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay, is there any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
No.
Okay. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is to approve with the following conditions. Temporary use approval is good for one year from today's date, after which time the temporary use must be discontinued and the site restored to its prior condition before December 20, 2023. The soil storage area may not extend beyond the limits as indicated on the, on the proposed site plan. Soil piles may not exceed 20 feet in height with a two-to-one slope. The appellant must continue to work with the engineering department regarding their existing soil erosion permit. The appellant must water and vegetate the mounds of soil as needed to prevent wind erosion and work with the engineering department appropriately. All existing fencing must be maintained at a height of six feet with matching gates in accordance with our fence ordinance and covered with opaque mesh to serve as a visual barrier to adjacent properties. Any proposed gates must remain secured off, off hours, and the appellant is to continue to work with the fire department to ensure emergency access. If any complaints are made or issues arise from activity of the site, the appellant is to work with the engineering department to mitigate the issues. And if unable to do so, will be required to appear back before this board to discuss how the issues will be mitigated. This recommendation is based upon the following. The proposed temporary use has not adversely affected the character of the area and has not been injurious to the surrounding neighborhood nor contrary to the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance. Complaints taken by the engineering department have been promptly addressed by the appellant. The existing site improvements provide adequate protection to abutting uses due to the opaque fencing and additional safeguards and conditions that is, that the city has required as part of this case. And the extension is needed, the third extension is needed due to trade labor shortages, building material shortages, and supply chain issues based on current economic conditions stemming from the COVID-19 pandemic. Additionally, the dirt storage is needed for completion of a infrastructure project benefiting the general public.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add at this point?
No, I think, you know, we've been there for two years. We've dealt with any issues or complaints with the neighboring businesses and residents in a timely manner. They personally know me and call me with any issues do occur. If there's any rain runoff or sediment and anything, they do call me and we respond immediately, so. If granted, your extension, you know, we'll continue that relationship with the neighboring businesses and residents, so.
Okay, thank you. We will now open this to public comment. If you just want to have a seat in the front row for us, we'll probably call you back up. If anybody is here to speak to this case, now is your opportunity to step forward and give your comments to the board. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it.
Okay. Ms. Libbit?
I have no issues with it either.
Okay. Mr. Rogers?
I have no issues with it either.
Okay. I just want to know if the project's going to be done in the next year.
Yes, it should be. We've got multiple schedules, alternate schedules, accelerated schedules, and worst-case scenario schedules. The dirt, our accelerated schedule, we're hoping to possibly start getting the dirt out of there by April of '23, then storing it on the sites, the project site at GLWA site. And worst-case scenario, we'd get the dirt out of there by November of this '23.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I, I mean, I, I kind of have a feeling we said that last year, too, but I hope that's really the case this next year.
Yes.
So, because I, I think this is highly uncommon. I don't know that it's ever happened in the long time that I've been on the board that we've offered a third year in the temporary... that we've offered a third year in the temporary use. So I just want to be clear on the record that this is highly unusual, but I will support it, again, understanding that we have hit some very unusual times. Not to say there's not unusual times in the future as well, but, so, let's see. Who wants to make, Ms. Levin, will you make a motion for us?
Sure. The appellant, Adam Kowits of Kokasing Industry, Inc., LEC, representing the owner, GHG Investments LLC, owner, is requesting the following from the board. Approval of a temporary use permit to allow for the outside storage of thirty thousand cubic yards of soil for a period of one additional year to continue to be utilized for phased construction project off-site. This is the third request. The location, the property is located on the north side of Eight Mile Road between Sherman Avenue and Berg Road, Sidwell Parcel, number two four three 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 seven six oh five two, Zone B three, general business, NP vehicular parking. Please note that this is changed from the legal notice. The subject property is mostly undeveloped with a portion currently used for soil storage. The property to the north is zoned R1, single-family residential, and is developed with a single-family home fronting Berg Road.
I might, I don't think, it sounds like the, all the findings are being read, isn't it just the motion that should be?
Yeah, you can skip the background.
I can, I will skip the background.
There's a lot of background.
Yes, there is a lot. I'm looking at that. And so, I move that we go with the staff recommendation to approve the following conditions. The temporary use approval is good for one year from today's date, after which time the temporary use must be discontinued and the site must be restored to its prior condition before December twentieth, twenty-three. The soil storage area may not extend beyond the limits as indicated on the proposed site plan. Soil piles may not exceed twenty feet in height with a two-to-one slope. The appellant must water and vegetate the mounds of soil as needed to prevent wind erosion and work with the engineering department appropriately. All existing fencing must be maintained at a height of six feet with matching gates in accordance with our fence ordinance. Any proposed gates must remain secured off-hours. If any complaints are made or issues arise from the activity at the site, the appellant is to work with the engineering department to mitigate the issues. The recommendation is based on the following. The proposed temporary use has not adversely affected the character of the area, and is not injurious to the surrounding neighborhood. The existing site improvements provide adequate protection to abutting uses due to the opaque fencing and additional safeguards and conditions that the city has required as part of the case. The extension is needed due to trade shortages, building materials shortages, and supply chain issues based on current economic conditions stemming from COVID-19 pandemic. Additionally, the dirt storage is needed for the completion of an infrastructure project benefiting the general public, and I move that we approve this temporary extension.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Your request is granted, thank you. All right, that closes our public hearing. Looks like we have a set of minutes for November fifteenth. Did anyone have any corrections or changes? Looked fine to me, but...
I was fine with that.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the fifteenth of November?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Okay, looks like we do not have any cases from January meeting that was scheduled. So can I have a motion to cancel the meeting for January twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Okay, so the meeting is canceled for January twenty-fourth. Anyone have any miscellaneous? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye? Meeting is adjourned.